We have a public hearing to consider an application from Patricia Newland to rezone approximately 4.163 acres of property located on Douthat Road from a business B1 zone classification to a business B2 zone classification in order to proceed to apply for a special use permit to allow for an amusement park. The property is further identified as Tax Map 44, Parcel 4C. The property is in the Highlands area as contained in the comprehensive plan. With that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Beth, would you like to talk about?
As you said, the applicant is requesting to rezone the 4.163 acres of property on Douthat Road that she purchased several months ago from B1 classification to B2 classification. Ms. Newland contacted the zoning office on July 9th of 2021 regarding zoning approval for a business license to operate a family entertainment center. This would include putt-putt courses, laser tag courses, outdoor skating rinks, and arcade. I explained to Ms. Newland the property is zone B1 business, which does not allow for these uses. We discussed the possibility of filing for a use not provided for, but Ms. Newland later contacted me with information classifying her business as an amusement park. I researched the county ordinance pertaining to amusement parks, and the county code states amusement park means in a commercial recreational establishment where permanent dwellings or structures have been erected for the purpose of a circus, carnival, or similar for midway shows or side shows and where classes of amusement and recreation are provided such as mechanically or electronically operated rides or food vendors. I later looked into the latest Illustrated Book of Development definitions, which is what the zoning, most zoning departments go by. It's the 2015 edition, and it states that amusement parks, better known as theme parks and family entertainment centers, are multi-use facilities primarily outdoors that may include structures and buildings where there are various devices for entertainment, including rides, booths for conduct of games, as well as buildings for shows, entertainment, et cetera. Smaller ones include a variety of indoor and outdoor activities such as traditional rides, shooting galleries, and games of skill and chance. Newer parks include music and craft shows, recreation, entertainment events, movie theaters, bumper boats, go-karts, roller rinks, arcades, and simulation and video games. The present use of the property right now is undeveloped property. The proposed use is a natural landscape amusement park. The current zoning is B1, and she's wanting to rezone it to B2 with an amusement park use after a special use permit. The property is joined by residential property to the north that is zoned AR. That 14-acre parcel was rezoned by your board in 2008 from B1 to AR. Douthat Road adjoins the property to the south, and there are residential properties to the east that are zoned residential R1, and properties located to the west are zoned AR agriculture. Properties across from Douthat Road are zoned B2, M1, and AR, and are mixed use of residential and commercial. The ingress and egress, the current access to the property is off of Douthat Road. The comprehensive plan states that the property is located in a Highland area, which is defined as areas characterized by forest, mountain terrain, and open space that exemplifies Allegheny County's heritage. Scattered residents are located in large lots, roughly one per five acres. There are opportunities for rural business in these areas. All subsequent rezoning to a business B2 district adjacent to residential districts require a minimum of 10 feet of buffering and screening for side yards. Development of the property will require to comply with all setback requirements for a B2 zone district. Side yards are none, rear is 10 feet, the front is 50 feet from the center of the right way, and they must be in compliance with the off-street parking. The property is not located within a flood hazard area, and the utilities have access to water and sewer, and there are also access to other utilities such as electric, telephone, cable service. Refuge collection will be provided by Allegheny County. A copy of the rezoning request was submitted to VDOT for their review of compliance with the TIA requirements, and I received a response from Alvin Trout with VDOT on September the 17th, 2021, and forwarded this information to Ms. Newland. Considering the zoning and uses of the surrounding properties, the uses of the proposed zoning designation should not have any detrimental effect on the adjoining properties. The proposed amusement park plans begin with the installation of a three-course laser course using a natural landscape and a 50-by-50-foot outdoor skating rink. A proposed 12-by-28-foot building will be needed on-site to house equipment and supplies, as well as a 20-by-100-foot building for bathrooms and possible arcade games. In the next five years, a plan to expand with an 18-hole putt-putt course and a possible go-kart track. Hours of operation will be from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM daily. The planning commission held their public hearing on this request on October 13th, 2021, but after opposition from residents within the Falcon Ridge area, they decided to table their decision until their next meeting on November 10, 2021. During the November meeting, they discussed the opposition from the neighbors regarding the noise the park would create. The noise pollution clearinghouse said a go-kart produced a sound anywhere between 70 to 78 decibels, and at about 100 feet away from the noise, drops down to about 40 decibels. With a vote of 5 for and 2 against, they made a motion to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to approve the rezoning request. Further research regarding the distance of the property owners from the Falcon Ridge subdivision area is indicated on the map with an average distance of 1,093 feet, which I believe I had attached with your packets. And the rezoning request is approved. The applicant will need to apply for a special use permit to allow for the use of amusement park classification. Upon approval, the property will require compliance with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
Is the applicant here?
I'm sorry?
Is the applicant here?
That's what I was going to say. I haven't seen her.
No, and I haven't spoke to her this week, so... I expected her to be here. Last I talked to her, she was supposed to be here.
Has she actually purchased the property?
Yes, sir.
She does own the property?
She does own the property, yes, sir.
I've visited the property several times. I'm trying to take her out of where she put all this stuff, but the entire property's on an incline.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a lot of grading?
No, she's not proposing any grading whatsoever unless she has the level for the building to be put there, for one of the buildings, but mostly she's going to leave it natural so that way she can use it for the laser tag, kind of a obstacle course type of thing.
Yeah. I just, I keep going back to that property and trying to tell you where she put all this stuff, and it's pretty steep incline where she proposed parking, felt that were the activities after we started. I don't know, I like to hear the others talk here that are doing something. What can I ask you to say? May I have a question?
Okay. Nothing else for me?
No, ma'am. I don't think so either.
One more question. Do they have an entrance permit from VNV?
From VDOT?
VDOT.
She was in contact with Mr. Trout.
So we don't have that?
I don't personally have that, no, sir.
So we don't know if she's got it?
Beth, can I ask a question as to what kind of structure she's going to put up with a, it says 12 by 28 and a 50 by 50?
Mm-hmm. Well, the 50 by 50 is the skating rink. It's a portable, it interlocks.
Okay. I wondered, so it's not a metal span building? It's...
No, the 50 by 50 is just an interlocking roller skating rink.
So it's not, okay, but that's the floor, I guess, you're talking about?
Yeah, just where they...
It's kind of covered.
And it has a, okay, so it's not a true structure. It's more of a modular?
Right. And then the others would just be like those metal buildings, just storage buildings type of?
Didn't you say that she was looking at possible arcade?
In later, yeah, she said in several years. Her first was just the laser tag course, and then, you know, later on, the arcade if money and if everything went well, and the putt-putt course in, you know, years down the road.
And has anything, any research been done on what the decibel level of noise with, what is it, 1,093 feet distance? What the correlation is between the level of noise and the distance? Does anybody know anything about that?
The only thing that I researched from that noise pollution clearinghouse is that the go-kart track, because that's what she was proposing before, but she said if that was the deal breaker, she would not do go-karts at all, because she would like to have something for the kids to do as they're, you know, anybody that's camping at Douthat, you know, it's just something for the kids in the area to do. And then that's when I, the go-karts was anywhere from 70 to 78 decibels. From there, at 100 feet from that, it comes down to 40, so every 100 feet you're coming down more and more.
And it's an outdoor laser tag course? It's not inside?
No, it's outside.
Okay. I wish she was here.
Are there any residents, Falcon Ridge residents here?
That's what I was getting ready to open it up in public. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, why don't we go open it up with the public and then the board comments after the public comment? Just kind of reverse it. I have one person signed up for public comment, but I think it pertains to this. If I had to guess, Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Would you?
My name is Tracy Morris, and I am a resident of Falcon Ridge Road. I'm at 130 Falcon Ridge Road. This is my husband, Frank. When we first heard about this, we kind of had the same reaction about where in the world is she going to put all this? And then we immediately then started thinking about not only everything crammed into that little over four acres, but the noise. The noise, and then when we heard go-karts that were going to come into play. And we molded over for a couple of days, and we just, we came to the conclusion that with our neighborhood, the way it's laid out and the way it curves up, I don't know if you've been into Falcon Ridge recently or not, but it curves, it passes this little parcel of land, and we are right there. We're pretty much the next driveway, and you wind your way up into a cul-de-sac in Falcon Ridge. There's approximately 35 houses there now, and we just thought this is bound to be a noise issue for us. And a lot of retirees in this neighborhood were home a lot during the day, during the evening, and we really value the quiet and just the neighborhood feel of what we have up there. We've been up there a little over 15 years. I know there are people, including the Kennys, who have been up there a lot longer than we have, and they love the neighborhood. We do, too. It's quiet, it's neighborly, it's nothing to be out in the yard working, and everybody goes by, and some people stop, we chat, you know, we waved each other, we check on each other. So we decided that we needed to go ahead and take this a step further, and we did go around and get a petition. And we did this over the last about week, 10 days, and I have 35 names, so I can submit that to you. Just tell me who to give it to, and... And so in talking with everyone as we did the petition, everyone was concerned, first of all, about the noise. We discussed that a lot. And then the next thing was, is property value. You know, how is something like this going to affect us as a little community, as a nice little community in Allegheny County? And will this, if it's not done, first of all, if it's not done properly, but if the noise becomes a factor, how is this going to affect all of us and our property values? So that was the next thing that was discussed. So there was really no one that we were able, I think we got everyone maybe, except for about five houses maybe, and we couldn't catch them at home at various times. There was no one that spoke for it. Now, I don't know if you can take our word for that or not, but Jean was with me, and we listened, and immediately what struck me was so many people didn't know about this. And of course, there's no sign on the property saying, notice, there is a rezoning hearing. There was nothing there to let the community know. And a lot of people don't get the newspaper anymore. If it hadn't have been for my 82-year-old mother spotting it in the paper and said, Tracy, I think you need to see this, you know, I might not have caught it myself, but I'm glad we did. And I think where I want to leave it is, is that there's not a lot of neighborhoods like this, especially on our end of the county, and we want to keep it nice. We want to keep it without a lot of traffic. We already have traffic that comes back and forth because of Douthat. We do have the industrial park down there, but this just further encroaches up the hill and at all of us and at our property, and we just felt like enough's enough, and we wanted to speak up. And I've always kind of looked at our little area there and that exit as the gateway to Douthat, and it's such a beautiful place, and we're nestled on that little hill up there, our little community, but we need to keep that area as nice as we possibly can and just be very careful about what we place and where. So that's kind of our overall feelings, and I think that reflects, you know, pretty much. I think if, once it shifts over to B2, then that opens the door for so much more to be there. And even if Ms. Newland decides next month that she's not going to do this, then the property has been rezoned. It now stands at B2, and we don't know what could become there. I mean, I think under this umbrella of amusement park, even a target range practice could fall under that, or, you know, an industrial, another industrial business of some sort that could create a lot of dust and noise and so forth. So just a lot of concern converting it then to the B2 because it's very hard to get that back. So thank you for your time, and I hope you'll give this a whole lot of consideration. There's a lot of houses up there that could very well be affected by this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on the public comment for the...
My name is Karen Warren, and I purchased the house at 129 Falcon Ridge Road, and my mother lives there now. So my concern again is, like anybody would be, is this is right in your backyard, and we can talk a lot about noise levels and decibels, but in reality, it's going to be a lot of children, and there's a lot of screaming usually with children when they're at a place like that. And if you've ever heard them in a swimming pool, four can sound like 40. So I think, you know, when you start having a lot of children in one place and a lot of teenagers, too, that's where the noise level comes in. Plus, it would be constant if it's 12 to 9, you know, that could go for a long time, and you would just feel like you didn't get any relief, and would weekends really have a lot of that, too? So, so my concern, too, is just like Tracy said with B2, once it's B2, that long list of things that could go there if this fails is just kind of horrifying if you read what can go in there under B2. And I have to have some real concerns about a real financial plan of, you know, what is this going to make? Is it going to bring that much tax dollars to the county? I doubt it. What is it going to make for her? And if you get discouraged and you're going to shut down within a short amount of time or whatever, then that leaves the door open for something else to come in there that could be even worse. So that's the real concern, too. So, and she's not here, I agree with you, to, you know, present what exactly is going on and what the plan is and how do you make it successful? Because one of the things I've been thinking about is how do kids get there? You know, their parents work during the day. Their parents aren't going to probably want to come sit there all day while they do these activities, so who's going to be monitoring and chaperoning? And who's going to be there if people can't just drop kids off? And how are they going to get there? Because, you know, it's an odd place, I think, for kids to have really easy access, I think, you know, being out in the country like that. And I think at one time, they tried to have some transportation just from Clifton Forge up to Douthat. If you'll remember, I think that was a few years ago, and I don't think that was real successful. I don't think there was a lot of people that actually went to do that activity when it was, I think, a free bus, if I'm not mistaken. So again, it's how are they going to get there? Who's going to be supervising? And that costs money. And so again, I go back to what is the financial plan of how much money is it going to make to pay for all these different things that you really need? And if it's not successful, I mean, nobody wants to just keep burning money to have it open for a long time, and then there opens up the B2 again. So again, I'll go back to obvious, the obvious part is the noise and the B2 zoning. The last thing, and she mentioned that about the exit, we already have a lot of industrial-looking exits from Covington all the way down, and I'm really concerned that we would do zoning in a piecemeal sort of fashion. So if something is B2 today, and then what are we going to do on another one in three years from now or whatever? And then you end up not having a real plan for that exit, and it would turn out looking just like Lomore. I mean, Lomore is an industrial exit, and I would hate to see that. I would like to see it more stay an area of maybe attracting people to Douthat, being more about the beauty of the area, and it would be great to have something else that would come in there that would kind of add to that idea of what would be the long-range plan for that interchange? Because we really need, at the end of the day, an exit that people go, what's Clifton Forge? Let's get off and look, you know? And I don't think you would do that at some of the other exits that are starting to look unwelcoming, I guess is a good way to put it. So again, I have a real concern about what is going to be the nature of that area there and what can we do to maybe grow it and have a better plan rather than just jumping on to whatever businesses apply? So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jean, Kenny, and I live at 128 Falcon Ridge Road. I basically really don't have much more to add to what these ladies have said, but I just want to tell you, to give you an idea of how important our neighborhood is to us. My husband, Ed, and I have lived there 39 years, and the main reason that we have stayed there is because of the quiet. We have woods behind us, and we don't deal with any noise. I mean, I can go out and on any day, I can hear the birds, and it's also a very safe neighborhood. And so our concern, like these ladies have said, is if Mrs. Newland, if her plan does not go through and this is rezoned into a B2, then it opens up a lot, a door to a lot of possibilities, and some of which could be very undesirable. So I really would appreciate if you would take this into much consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Comments? Questions?
I really wish the lady who's here tonight, of everything, I mean, if she's that interested in this project, and maybe she has good reason, I don't know, she'll hear from that. The thinking gets heavy. Residents have tried to locate on the north side of the interstate, oh, and over, that's where I can help empty property. For hours, I haven't been here. And he has, he's advertised, he put on the market. He changed his, I mean, he done everything he could to put visitors in his property with no success. I think I'm going to look at it once and walk away from it. I guess the thing that bothers me, the kids in our area, we have a lot of kids in our area, but I don't know if this is the kind of venue that kids are looking for these days. I mean, maybe back in there in 2000 or 90, this would probably be a good project. Or the putt-putt course right up the road, you know, I'd get to see anyone use it. I just have a hard time wrapping my hand around this thing. I could say I've looked at this property and talked to a lot of property owners out there. Some of them didn't have any idea of it, what was going on. There's a church on one side and a church across the road. Some are worshippers, or some are worshippers. I don't think they had an amusement park here, so just what the church is, that's the bigger there. I just kind of see this as a pit, a pit piece park. I just think, and I'm just one of them, I'm just throwing my opinion out there, but I just don't see the businesses that she's trying to go into on that piece of property. I think she's already purchased the property, but I just, I can't really go through this justice long enough.
I agree with you, Cletus. I feel like, as you folks rightly pointed out, once the zoning is changed, the doors open to, the list goes on and on and on and on. You do have a nice neighborhood up there, and I feel as if we need to protect those areas. We have a real serious housing shortage in Allegheny County, and this is not going to help that at all. So I'm really thinking perhaps this is a great business. Location, 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 and this one is, as far as I'm concerned, a very unfair choice. I would definitely vote no to rezon.
Well, the big concern's out here. It's all outdoors. So what you can do in the wintertime? You know, make a town in the wintertime. Summertime, when it's blistering hot, and you know, you put these kids out on the skating rink at 95 degrees, or pouring down a rain, and I don't know, we may be doing a favor by not, but there's so many obstacles here that are negative.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll go ahead. If the board does turn this down, don't leave here thinking that's going to guarantee. It's always going to be open land like it is now, because anything that's done B1, anything on that list that's proved B1, they don't even have to show up here. So I got these good building permits, and I'm going to be honest, I can't remember everything that's in the allowable under B1 classification, so it's not like we're permanently stopping any kind of development there. It's just, you know, you kind of know what you might get here, but at the same time, anything that falls under B1, somebody booked one, we can't stop them.
But B2 really works bad. I mean, it's...
B1 is more of a commercial-type zoning. B2 includes more smaller business-type. It looks like, you know, there's much more opportunity for the business.
It really opens it up.
Correct.
But don't leave here thinking this is the end of it. Somebody under B2 can fly tomorrow, we can't do a thing. And one day, there may be an M1 zoning request, or, you know, if something does come to that exit.
But I think what's happened tonight, from what I've seen, is that awareness has been raised, and so the door is now open for action on your part to mitigate possibilities down the road, I would think.
Yeah, I think from a business standpoint, I hate that Ms., I want to make sure I pronounce her name right. Headland?
Newland.
Newland, I'm sorry, Newland, has purchased the property. It is, I'm tickled to death to see an investment into the area, but I do think the business plan, as stated, you know, in her application, I would much rather see that business plan in a vacant building downtown in one of the communities more so than an outdoor area. I think it fits, you know, better for, to reuse a building like that. I don't think the application request considers any kind of earthmoving or grading that would have to be done for some kind of building access, parking. I don't think it's a complete plan, you know, what it seems like to me. I certainly applaud her for her effort, her, after her purchase of the area. I just don't see it being successful in the way it's written or it's applied.
I'll be honest with you, her not being here makes me question just how serious she's probably going to be. If I was doing this, invest that kind of money, I would be here, I'd have people with me, and I wish she would have. Yeah, I've never had a public hearing on a change, and the applicant not even show up. I don't...
I told you, Rob, we're not trying to turn away any kind of, but some we can't. We're all... There's a terror area, we need a decent job. We need kids and jobs, and there's so much potential for that piece of property. I mean, that would have to be rezoned, and it wouldn't be there for money anymore. So this, that piece probably has been on the market for so many years.
How many years?
Probably longer than Falcon Ridge did, but, and it hasn't, that's just a group. I just don't think this is a good...
Do we, I need to ask Jean if we move up faster, but... Mr. Attorney, we have a question. For the motion, do we waive policy for a motion to rezon or a motion to not approve? How do we?
I think you have to waive policy to take any action.
Right, we would waive policy to take action, but in order...
Make the policy approved or what is it?
Okay, our policy would be to either approve or not approve, correct? And it would fail to be approved?
Right. Or you cannot make a... Wait until we waive policy.
We can make...
Wait until next month instead?
Out of courtesy to this lady, I don't know why she's not here. I'm fearing this for her. She's not gonna start anything next 30 days. Why don't we just follow the normal process?
She's already bought the land.
I mean, she's already bought the land, committed to it, but, you know, I've had things happen, and I missed real important things, too, in my life, but we should, I think out of fairness to her, we ought to wait 30 days.
Could, can I ask a question? Did she present any kind of financial plan? Because, I mean, I'm a financial planner, and I just don't see this making money.
We can't ask that?
I think we can request that.
There's no, there's no way of saying how you vote?
After public hearing, there's no public comment. Well, she can, if she shows up, she can speak, and doing public comment, of course, but the public hearing is closed.
There is no business plan.
There's also family emergencies, car wrecks. I can't understand why she's not here. I don't think this, I'll be honest...
Was she at the planning commission meeting?
I'm sorry?
Was she at the planning commission meeting?
Yes, sir, yeah.
She was.
I'll be honest, I don't think this is gonna pass, but I think out of courtesy to the lady, we ought to wait.
And we're not required to take policy in here to take action anyway. So I would, I don't think we just don't take action on it, go to the next action item.
That's our normal process, right? Go to on at the next meeting.
So we'll move past that, that'll go to the January, new business, or actually old unfinished business portion of January's meeting. Thank you all for coming out, by the way, and your public comment.